There we go. Everybody on the session, I'm going to be recording this session. So if you don't want to be on the video and just pop your video off during the session.
I like that, thank you. Okay. Yeah, I think everyone's happy, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, do you mind, I'm going to go in, I don't know if I can actually. So could you mind just muting a few people if that's right? I think that's probably going to be able to. Sure. Yay, lovely, okay, so let's get started. So as a collective, we're all new to it, we're all new to each other, we're breathe and recover. And we've got involved with Spinal Injuries Association because of a bit of a longstanding relationship through. And so I'm going to jump in already. My name's Fran, I'm a nurse and I used to work on spinal ward. So I used to meet obviously a lot of people during that time who had had spinal cord injury. And during that time, obviously, I met members of SIA. So there was the guys on the ground that would come around to talk to people. And they were amazing, so I met them on a very personal level on that front. And then a few years ago, I was at a spinal conference over in Belfast. I met the CEO of Spinal Injuries Association, so Mick. And so he was new in post. I gave a presentation about yoga and what breathing recover, what we do with people. And so the type of breathwork practices we use, the type of yoga, the meditation we use. I gave a presentation and he got excited, but so did I, so we had a conversation about what would this be like to take this to more people? So not just be a small pocket of people that got to experience these amazing practices. And so from that, we stayed in touch over the last few years. And amazingly, we've got to this point even today where we partnered with Spinal Injuries Association and are offering to teach, to share the practices, the yoga practices that we know to more people. Which is great. So, but like I said, just coming back to myself on a personal note. And so, like I mentioned, I'm a nurse, I've worked in spinal cord injury and BUBU community as well as the ward. And I have a massive passion to find ways of, it sounds funny, but normalizing. So yoga is a huge part of that. So I'm a yoga teacher as well and was prior to even getting involved in these worlds. And for me, it's about finding that connection in myself. So it doesn't matter what life's doing, so my own life as well as the bigger sense, that I have capacity to meet it, that I have health in my system to be of use. And that, yeah, that I have energy, like I actually want to go do stuff, it's really important in life to me. So that's why I teach and I want to share that energy. So, and so it's not just me talking.
So I'll go next. So my name's Ian, I'm a living yoga method teacher as well as a paramedic. And I've been part of Breathing Recover for about a year now. And been teaching, been doing yoga for about four years. And my big interest with yoga as a collective, but also breath, breathwork is quite a big interest to me. Just the way it can affect our health in general, simple things and how much is not spoken about. And it's something that we can all change and fix and it will improve our health completely, not just breathing wise.
Sure.
Feel like, yeah, we're in a little band.
Yeah.
So my name's Lauren and I have been working with these guys for about a year, but we've known each other a long time. And a little bit of my background is I have been working with a couple of heroes actually, so I'm quite happy to say that. I've worked with veterans and people who have experienced life-changing injuries. And but also a huge part of my work has been working with trauma. So I am a yoga teacher, obviously, that's why I'm here. But I work with psychological wellbeing teams and I help create programs for them. I help promote the health aspect of yoga and breathwork. And actually, a big passion for me is really around the accessibility. So I'm sure Fran will touch on this, but there's a huge amount of misconceptions about the whole yoga world, especially in the West. You know, it's very much demonstrated, a lot of flexibility, a lot of full body movement and all this kind of stuff. And actually, that is just one aspect of yoga and I know Fran will go into that. So for me, being able to share these practices with people and demonstrate that they can be accessed by anybody in any state. And one of the big learnings I have taken from my work with veterans in the military is that usually the trauma in a way is a bit of a gateway to change and transformation. And so we can use these practices to obviously enhance our health. But our awareness and our awareness is so vital to make more positive choices in our lives. So yeah, that's a bit of my background, but it was necessary, thank you.
Yeah. Segue. So leading off from that, there's a couple of things before we go further into what we do. And the obvious enough, I just want to talk about the elephant in the room, but this is something that would come up in. So I used to have a group class that would be taught off board, that is often people that had recently had a spinal cord injury. And but in the key three months following that, obviously, there's a huge amount of medical input. And a lot of people were just getting so fed up, they prodded and poked and called a patient, there's a lot of boxing off. So from that, we get together and have just a yoga session. And most of the people that would say, okay, you're holding a yoga session, excuse me. And they'd say, I can't move, how am I supposed to do that? So it's a great question because most people in everyday life, you talk to anyone, they say, I can't touch my toes, how can I do that? So just to really make it clear, it's not about touching your toes. And in yoga, so there's a particular way of talking about Hatha yoga. So this is where the source of living yoga method is Hatha. And talks about how there are eight branches to it, so you think of a tree, you've got your eight branches. Only one of those branches of yoga is posture, is physical movement. So you think you've got seven other branches, even without engaging the body in that way, that everyone can do. So that in itself was a game changer. So for a lot of people that were in really tough stages of their body was paralyzed and will be and they would continue to be. Or someone that was in a bed and couldn't get out of bed for whatever reason, they could still practice this. So this is where it opens it up, it's like, okay, well, we can all come together then. It doesn't matter what the body is doing or not doing, there's still capacity, there's a chance to come together and actually do practice, to reclaim part of who you are. So it's just something I wanted to encourage everyone with, but it's the big question, so let's just answer it straight away. And from those classes, what I wanted to share a little bit before we go into an actual practice. So if you want to, you can do a practice to find out a bit more of what we actually do today. And it's some of the feedback that we got from people that as part of these classes. So what they would often tell each other and often me, they'd quietly come to me afterwards, would be that over the course of the weeks that they were practicing, so this would be roughly a 40 minute to an hour session we were doing. And was they that they felt less stress, that their anxiety would have lessened, that they were sleeping a bit better. And the amazing one that I think wasn't necessarily expected, but Ian would tell you otherwise now as well, was that lung capacity increased. So the health of their lungs actually started to improve and they could take a deeper, bigger breath and their exhale would get stronger. And one of the side effects of that was, they might say that it wasn't great for their families, but their voices would get stronger too. So there was a lot of amazing benefits. And I would actually call them side effects that would help the health of the whole system. There's a lot of research now coming out about the benefits of yoga pretty much for every single long-term condition you can think of. But the thing that I keep coming back to and we all keep coming back to is, this is for you. This isn't about an end goal, it's about taking some time. And we all practice daily, so it's part of our everyday normal lives. And but it's about planning something for you in the months, everything else that can be going on in life. So today, what we wanted to do and what we're doing is giving you a chance to actually feel that in yourself. If you want to take part in practice, fantastic. If you're actually like, that's fine, if you just want to watch, you know, what a funny bunch of people. But I'd really encourage you to give it a go, see how far you get with it, you might find that you surprise yourself. And just to explain a little bit more as well, it will be working with your breath and it'll be working with your attention, so your awareness. So that will be where we will have a period of relaxation and the whole way you're guided. I don't expect anyone to be like, nailed it, got it. It's just literally a give it a go, have a play, see what your system wants to do today. And you'll be learning the whole time from yourself most of all. I may be talking, but it will be you that will be giving you the messages, telling you what you need. So keep listening to you, you're the expert on me. Okay. So with that, lovely, so a couple of just housekeeping things of if at any point you do just want to just take a pause away from it, you can. And also with the breathwork, just give it a go. You might find you can do all that. What we've done with this particular session is that we've catered for everyone. So if you find your breath is very shallow, it's actually, you feel it higher up because you've got a high spinal cord injury, not a problem, still give it a go. And because a lot of your natural automatic breathing will be from lower down, so don't worry about it, you'll still be able to do. And likewise, if you've got full capacity, give it a go as well. It doesn't matter where in your lungs that you breathe from, just engage with it. It just doesn't mean you're like, give it a go. Cool, okay, so on that, I'm keeping to my time schedule. Right, so as much as you can, make sure that you feel comfy is the first thing. And start by just coming into your body with your awareness. So what I mean by that is you can close your eyes if you feel comfortable to. You can just go by sound with all of this. So if you feel happy to, you can close your eyes and just start listening for a moment to yourself, to your breath, to your body, to your mind. We all have different types of days that we can come in with, might be a lot going on, might be very little. Whatever is going on, bring it in, it's all energy. And using that energy, allow yourself to connect with what it is that's even brought you to this cafe today. So feeling into that source that's motivated you, that it's curiosity, that you're feeling like you'd like to see some other faces, get involved in a bit of community, whatever it is, bring it in and find it as a source of your inspiration, by giving it a go to them. So using that, we have the name for this of a Sam Kelpa, so it's an intention. So within your system, set your intention for what you'd like to get out at this time. And you don't need to share that with anyone, but it's just for you. And with that, we take a bow to it. So whether this is internally or if your head can drop a tiny bit, just in your own way, we take a bow to the intention, the thing that's motivated you to want to try, to practice, to do some yoga with us today. We take a bow to each other because we do this as a group. So we inspire each other, we encourage each other, this is our community, so we take a bow to each other. And then we take a bow to the method itself, that we have this systematic way of working with our body, our mind, our systems. I'm going to use a Sanskrit word you've probably heard before, meaning thank you, namaste. Okay, so whether your eyes are open or closed, go with what feels comfortable. Allow yourself now to focus solely on your breath. We're going to introduce some breathing techniques. The first one's quite slow and smooth. So you're allowing a slow inhale through the nose in your own time, doesn't need to be in time with me or anyone else. And allow an exhale out to the mouth, our breath letting the mouth open up a bit like a sigh. So we call this the our breath. Nice and slow in your own time, inhaling through the nose as much as you can. Exhaling out to the mouth, our breath like this one. So just being aware of where we try and force something, so letting that drop a little bit. So inhales through the nose in your own time, exhales out to the mouth. Our breath signing, dropping tension with the exhale. So you might find this is quite short for some of us, that's okay, you work with how the breath is right now. An easy way of working with it for yourself is to count in your mind. So maybe as you inhale, you're counting one, two, maybe three, maybe longer. And then as you exhale our breath, you would count the one, two, three, four. It doesn't matter, you just notice, so you're working with your own breath and allowing your system to soothe and calm itself to begin with. So you're establishing a breath, so this is the our breath, this is our fundamental. Okay, so we're just going to take a little bit longer with practicing this one breath, allowing it to do its work in the system. It will start working on that parasympathetic part of our nervous system, this is the part that helps to calm and soothe. Okay. So over time, it will lengthen. Both the inhales can get slower, the exhales can get slower. The more you create that our sound, a little bit of constriction, like you're fogging up a glass in the back of the throat, the more you'll find that exhale in particular will get longer. So it's a really easy way to soothe the nervous system. Okay, one more of these breaths for you. Dropping the tension there. Okay, good. So from here now, allow yourself just to relax, drop even that breathing, just be in the natural self. We're going to come into the more dynamic breath. So we've been soothing the system, now we're ready to energize it, wake it up a little bit. So there's something called double breathing that we teach. It's got a lot of power and it's a little bit faster, but we're still going to break it down. So double breathing usually originates from the belly. It can be in the chest, it can be belly to chest, but we're going to work on belly in particular today. I'll show it first before then you give it a go and feel free to giggle because it's quite funny when we first do this. So again, go with what's naturally there with belly. But the way it looks is that it's going to be two inhales through the nose as my belly expands and then it's two exhales out to the mouth as my belly goes back. So you can hear the sound of it, it's quite a strong breath. So take it to the balls, allow your breath to come back in, if you've been trying already. So it's stimulating, it's designed to, it's working with our sympathetic nervous system, it's going to bring in energy. With that, we're going to be doing 10 of these breaths in a set. Give it a go, if you get to five and you're like, whoa, that's enough, not a problem, just allow yourself to relax. So if you can do all 10, fantastic, give it a go. After the 10, we're then going to come into a soothing part of what we come into, something called energized stillness. So it allows the system to calm, to re-establish the balance and to feel the power of that energy in the system. Okay, so we're going to give it a go slowly to begin with. For some of you, you might find it's a bit too slow, don't worry about it, we will get quicker and vice versa, for some it's maybe spot on. So just allow it to feel it in yourself of what feels good. Okay, so the way we come into it, we'll take an inhale through the nose first of all, so we'll do this together. Exhale out to the mouth. And then allow a natural inflation to come in. And then start with two exhales out to the mouth. Into the nose. Now. Nose. Now slow it down a bit. A little bit gentler. Good, there you go. Two more. Very good, last one. Now exhale our breath out. Empty out, just to your point. Now if you can, take an inhale up, just fill up in your own way through the nose. If you can't hold it for a moment, do so, otherwise exhale our breath, please relax. If you haven't already, close your eyes and come into your first energized stillness. So allowing your system to rebalance. To feel the energy that you're made of. This is you, your body, your energy, your system. So just being aware of any sensations or silences that are coming up. Brilliant. Okay, so we're going to come into a second round of the same double breathing. We have a tiny bit more pace throughout, so we're going to keep it similar but slightly more paced towards the end, okay? So we start in exactly the same way. So all together, we take an inhale through our nose, filling up as you can. And we'll be an exhale our breath out of the mouth. Allow a natural inflation to come into your system and start with two exhales out of the mouth, away you go. Nose. Now. Nose. Now. Very good. Keep working with it. You've done really well, two more. Last one. And exhale our breath, empty out. Slight pause and allow an inhale to come in, filling up as much as you can. And then exhale our breath, releasing, relaxing, coming into your energized stillness. So allowing the tension to drop. Even noticing if for a few moments, you might feel that you don't have the same need to breathe, very normal. Your system has been taking in so much of what it needs quickly, that it's enabling it to come into a place where it can rest. Can come into the energized stillness. It's during these moments that the mind starts to unravel, it gets to drop the things it's been trying to juggle. So allow it to do whatever it needs to do, there's no judgment on it. So allowing it to recalibrate, to come into balance. Just noticing the changes in your energy, in your system. Okay, we're going to come into one final round of the double breathing. This time it's going to be a little bit quicker, so for some of you might find it a little bit easier. So the same beginning, we'll do it all together, of inhaling through the nose. Exhale our breath out of the mouth. Emptying out, taking a natural inflation and starting with two exhales out of the mouth, away you go. Into the nose. Out of the mouth. A little bit faster. Engage a bit more. Brilliant. Did really well. Two more. Last one. And then exhale our breath, empty out, release. Take a pause if you can and then an inhale, rebound up, filling up as much as you can through the nose to the top. Holding for a moment and then exhale our breath, release, soften, relax, come into your energized stillness. Allowing your body, your brain, your system, your energy to rebalance itself. Making that massive switch from thinking into feeling. To being in your body, in your system. And giving yourself a chance to feel the very energy that you're made of. From this space, very gently now, start to allow your breath to be the focal point. So whether you have your eyes closed or not, I'd invite you to close your eyes. Start focusing on your breath, just noticing it. And playing with creating a little bit of constriction, just a little bit, we all know what's right for you. We call this the UJai breath. So it's a type of breathing, it's going to sound a bit like a tide, like the ocean wave on the shore. So it's like you're trying to fog up a glass from the back of your throat. So imagine if there was a mirror in front of you. And then slowly allow yourself to, that same sound from the our breath, but through the nose. So inhales and ah, and exhales also the nose as much as you can. Trying to create, I always joke about this, but it sounds a bit like Darth Vader. So allow yourself to feel the constriction in the back of the throat and making that soothing ocean sound with your breathing. So as I said, it's called the UJai breath and it's used throughout yoga. It's incredibly powerful, slowing down and calming our nervous systems. So when we're in that anxious state, we can use this breath to bring us back into harmony. And it allows our minds to slow down alongside it. So our breath and our mind and our body are so connected, how we breathe shows us how we can be thinking or feeling. So focusing on the slow UJai breath. Keep following the sound, again, if it helps, you can do the counting for yourself. So just noticing the length, the number of beats to an inhale. And then count for the exhales, it slowly moves the body, allowing tension to go with it. Very normal for the exhale to be longer and easier to work with, not a problem. Meet your body, meet your nervous system exactly where it's at. So allowing that breath to carry you through. Okay, so nice and slowly with this, you can keep the breath going with the UJai breath. We're going to add another layer to it now, so this is a bit of mental attention, keep that UJai breath. If you can, try listening to the sounds within the breath. So all you're doing is listening to your own breath. And you're looking for the sounds of a mantra. So these sounds, when you're breathing in, try and hear the sound of hum. So it's very subtle and don't worry if it's not there now, it's just something that sometimes we can hear in the breath sounds. So when you're breathing in, it will sound like a hum. As you're breathing out, listen for the sound of sah. Again, these are very simple sounds that are in the breath, so every time you're breathing in, hum. And you can even say it in your mind to begin with, as you're breathing out, sah. Again, like the ocean wave on the shore. This is in your own time, it doesn't need to be in time with us. Because we're listening to your own breath, which means I'm also going to go quiet for a moment so you can hear. So I'm just going to go quiet for a minute as you listen to your breath. If it helps, keep the UJai strong, but you may find you want to start to let that soften and even stop. Just regular breathing and listening to those sounds of hum, sah. Okay, so I'm going quiet for a minute, I'll let you know when the minutes are, so enjoy the process. Okay, very gently. Be easy in your body, that is a full minute of practicing your hum, sah. We're going to come into an even deeper state of relaxation. So allow your breathing to lessen with effort. Whatever you're doing, allow it to soften, to drop, become natural for you. So it's like it's the background. We're going to bring our awareness now from the breath into our bodies. But we're going to start up at the point between our eyebrows. So we're going to take a tour. For this type of tour, it's called a sixty-one point body rotation. And very importantly, it doesn't matter if you have feeling sensation in any part of the body for this. And it also doesn't matter if you have that body part there. So you might have, for this group that people have worked with, there may be an amputation that's happened. That's okay too. So this is done in your mind. So keeping your eyes closed as much as possible. We're going to take a tour around the body, nice and slowly. Just feel into that part in your mind. So you're putting your awareness, it's like a light touch to that part. So you do this with your awareness. Okay, so from that point between the eyebrows, allow that to drop down now to the base of your throat. Now moving across to your right shoulder. Right elbow. Right wrist. Right thumb. Index finger. Middle finger. Ring finger. Little finger. Right wrist. Right elbow. Right shoulder. Base of throat. Left shoulder. Left elbow. Left wrist. Left thumb. Index finger. Middle finger. Ring finger. Little finger. Left wrist. Left elbow. Left shoulder. Base of throat. Now moving down, centre of chest. Right chest. Centre of chest. Left chest. Centre of chest. Navel. Cubic bone. Right hip. Right knee. Right ankle. Right big toe. Second toe. Third toe. Fourth toe. Little toe. Right ankle. Right knee. Right hip. Cubic bone. Left hip. Left knee. Left ankle. Left big toe. Second toe. Third toe. Fourth toe. Little toe. Left ankle. Left knee. Left hip. Cubic bone. Navel. Centre of chest. Base of throat. Point between your eyebrows. Now allow your awareness to expand from that point throughout the whole of your body. Being in the whole of your body. Allowing yourself to feel the areas that are loud, that are quiet, that are silent. And noticing. Allowing yourself to drop any ideas about how it should or shouldn't be. Noticing the whole of your body. Now doing the same of noticing your energy options, whatever it is that's in your system today. And allowing it to be there. And very gently now, allowing yourself to notice your mind. Noticing maybe that it might have a lot of thoughts going through it. Or it might have very few. Allowing yourself to drop the ideas around it again, how it should or shouldn't be. From this awareness. Allow yourself to go into your core. To your centre, into your heart. And from this space, just noticing that you're able to notice. That you're aware of how your body is, how your energy and emotions are. And how your mind is today. That there's a space within you that observes, that is able to watch. And it's in this space that often we confine what we need. It will quietly prompt us as to what it is that we need to be in balance with ourselves. And it's into this space now, I'm going to ask you to breathe. So that inner place, allow your breath to come into naturally. And allow it to come out naturally. So with every breath, every breath that's coming in, you're bringing life into that space. You're bringing a bit of energy from the outside world. And with every breath that's leaving you, the exhales, you're letting go of anything that you don't need anymore. Anything that you're happy to let go. So with every inhale, you're receiving what you need. And with every exhale, you're releasing what you don't. It's this breath that is allowing us to connect with the world outside us as well as our internal world. Life coming in, life going out. It's in constant motion. With this breath now, we're going to use it to travel to come into a little bit more of a present awareness on the outside. So following the breath, engage with it a little bit more. You want to use your UJ breath, that constriction in the back of your throat, you can. Allowing the breath to pull you into your bodies a little bit more, coming out of the depth that you've come into. Feeling that little bit more energy coming in with the breath. We're slowly approaching towards the end of the practice. Using this breath in whatever way you need to bring yourself out of that depth, feeding it that still, but when you step out. And we're going to seal the class, the session, all together with using this breath now, just as much as we did at the very beginning. Of using this breath now, two more, taking a breath in, in your own way. Allowing the breath to leave the body. We'll take a breath all together now, so again, anywhere you can, take a breath in through the nose. Take an exhale, our breath, out of the mouth. Letting go, relaxing, dropping the need for that specific breath. And just taking a bow now to yourself. So really feeling what the practice has done in your system. Acknowledging the energy, the motivation you brought to participate. Taking a bow to each other, that we came together, we supported each other in this, we tried to renew. So really acknowledging that we do this as a group. And taking a bow to the method itself, to the line that we're using this method. And of course, just as I started with it, I'm ending with a namaste. Thank you. Well done, yeah. Okay, you've just completed your first breathwork yoga session. Well done. So it's quite normal that you might feel very relaxed. And actually, it can sometimes feel quite tiring in your system because you've stopped, breathed. You've had a chance to actually check in with yourself. So that's always been quite a normal post-pass sensation that you might feel like, you know, I really felt it now. That's very normal. Or it could be, you're actually like, oh, shed some stuff and I feel quite good and I want to go do things. So also have a disclaimer around you, but whoever's around, whether you are now at your work or at home, that you might want to take some time just to check in with yourself in that transition anyway. And you might want to say, not right now, I want to do some other stuff first. And so just in how you're feeling now, it's full permission, just allow yourself to feel whatever's coming up or not. I think if there are any questions, I know, I'm assuming you're free to unmute yourself.
Yeah, that can actually, that's going to be back to somebody with that one. And so we've got a bit of time now, if you do have any questions. It may be that it comes later. Yeah, brilliant, John, go ahead.
I had difficulty in exhaling twice. Because I thought the first one, I was fairly empty. So it's quite hard to push more out.
Got you.
I got there eventually, but it was quite hard because maybe I was pushing too hard.
So much of the first.
And I couldn't do a second one. I did, but I found it quite hard to do. But what I really enjoyed was going around the body. Starting here and going down all the limbs and thinking about it. Because I've tried other types of yoga where I've scanned the body like a bright light going down.
Brilliant.
But I like the idea of taking my trip around the body and then coming back. So very relaxing. I had a little pain in my neck when I started and it seems to have eased off for some reason.
There you go.
Certainly works better than paracetamol.
You should bottle that.
I think that's so cool, you know. And I, when I first started working with veterans, you know, one of the first things, I was, I was teaching a session and I had a couple of guys in their thirties, quite high-aged amputees. And we were kind of looking at each other, you know, death stare as to what we were going to do in this practice. And I had a couple of them staff there as well. And they were petrified because I started doing these body rotations with them and getting them to feel into their toes and their bodies. And I actually had a member of staff asking, you know, is that appropriate? You know, like, you know, how's that going to be? And some of the feedback I had from the guys was incredible because it was like, they could still feel parts of themselves mentally and energetically. And it's not unknown to have phantom pain. And a lot of work that they actually do, they would do a mirror and they'd get them to kind of, you know, feel into these areas of the body that have been silent or suffered a trauma. So there's some powerful stuff in being able to put your mind and hold that concentration even. It's pretty cool. But like, to be able to follow that and kind of pinpoint, it is huge.
But I don't know if you noticed anything about the inhale, like getting enough breath. Yeah, so brilliant, what you did with the breath yourself. You've just found out that that's what you do. You've, brilliant, sorry, I'm getting distracted. But for everyone, with the double breathing, you learn so much about how you use your own breath in a sense of like, like you were saying of the, I'm trying to do it all upfront. It's like, it's like that, I want to do this, I'm going for it. Fantastic. So you've learnt something in itself just from that. And so over time, I don't know if it will, if it will connect with you straight away. But for the ribs in particular, if they've been used to being working like that, so you're used to doing a maybe, so they're not used to having to hold halfway through. Because it's a half breath, if you think about it. So sometimes it's easier not to explain too much when we first do it because you gave it a go and you figured it out. So to me, I'm like, you're doing exactly what needs to be done. You're learning what your body is capable of doing straight off, how you would approach something. But also, over time, that will start easing up and you're getting more control of the actual breath itself and the lungs and how they're operating. Because if they're always used to doing a full exhale and not being able to slow the expansion and contraction down, that's where you'll find there'll be new benefits coming in, the more you do those exercises. So that's just one example. Fantastic. Thank you for sharing it.
Yeah. There's a couple of comments on there, sorry.
The other technical group. Okay, um, let's see.
Okay, someone wasn't able to make it.
Yeah, not a problem. And so double breathing, if you can find, so I'll just read it out. So wondering about the double breath, maybe some people find it difficult to do? Or do you have a spinal injury which limits the ability to do this? Do you ever say imagining the breath, go down and breaths out? Good question. And so there is challenge in the double breathing. And so I think probably everyone today found, like, there's bits where you're like, oh, some stuff is easy for us. Some stuff we're like, that's really sticky. And it may even feel like, my lungs just don't want to operate like that. That's part of the challenge. And so to give an example, I mentioned about beforehand about some of the benefits of lung capacity expands. And I've got an amazing experience with a woman who, she, I'll give a tiny bit of background. High level spinal cord injury. Her lung capacity, when she first started working with me, was around one litre. So not great, like for adult human beings, we all know that we need at least a litre, if not more, to be healthy. Over the course of months, it's not a quick process, but it is a steady process. She was practising her double breathing on and off most days. I'd hear her quietly doing it and she'd come to class. And her lung volume went up to three, so three litres. But absolutely phenomenal. So that's someone that, again, you can't compare yourself to that person because that was her set of lungs, her body, the condition she was in overall. But that also shows, but it does show what progression can have, like can do from just doing it yourself. Like, I didn't even prompt her. So if you, if she could have asked that same question right at the beginning and I'd say, well, let's find out. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't have predicted that. She fast surpassed anything I could have imagined. It was wonderful to see that and I could see her energy come through from it, more importantly. So, or you can teach all these things, but ultimately, this is for you and how you're feeling.
Yeah, and to add to that, I don't know how, did anybody find it a little stressful to do it? To do the double breathing, no? That's great. That's great. And because actually, sometimes on a, on a mental level, it can be quite overwhelming to first start doing this type of breathing where it is, obviously at the moment, we're focusing on a small aspect of the practice. But the very nature But the very nature of the double breath is designed to disturb. It's designed to push the edges and our boundaries internally. And it is activating that part of the nervous system, and I'm sure you guys know bits and bobs about the nervous system. And that is usually your threat system and your system of activity and get up and go. And then what we're learning is to be able to observe those sensations in the body without becoming overwhelmed by them. Okay, so it is a process that takes time and that tolerance level takes time. But it's just good to kind of, yeah, be aware. We've got my shield there.
I didn't find it stressful, I just found it hard work.
Yeah, well done. You probably could feel, or maybe not, maybe it was quite straightforward, but there is a little bit of a crescendo. So, and then a relaxing off with the practice. The breathwork is designed to get you involved, a bit of hard work, and then you get to relax a bit more. So it's like you've earned your reward almost, so it is designed. Sorry, go for it.
Yeah, the only thing I experienced was difficult breathing. I experienced what I was inhaling, exhaling, both, both in and out twice and once, repeat the method, difficult breathing experience.
Yep, well done. Like I was saying, it is a challenge and you're going to meet some limitations quite quickly. And sometimes it's good to acknowledge that very, very few people that I've ever worked with, regardless of background, so I can, I'm going to give you an extreme example of, I've taught some people before, we all have, who have been high performance. So think you're Paralympians and you're like elite athlete at university. So you would think, you look at them and you go, you're super healthy, fit, you do all this training. They also would go, oh, double breathing. So a bit like with Lauren was saying of, it can hit up against some stuff. And so whether that's a mental going, oh, I'm not sure if I like this by preference. Or it can be just physically, that sometimes the lungs really have, haven't had the opportunity to work in that way before. So it can feel quite difficult. But it's also acknowledge that's okay.
Did you, did you find the coordination difficult, Gopal? Like following the instruction or did you, was it, do anything particularly that you noticed?
Um, it's free, following the coordination and doing it, difficult for me.
Yeah, the coordination, yeah, that is, it's really interesting because then with, with anything that's learning something new, we, we're quite hard on ourselves naturally, aren't we? And, you know, we, we want to be able to get it straight away. And but there is part of this process which is a learning. And learning something new and something foreign, and often that feels probably a bit off, a bit, a bit weird, you know. So, oh, that's good. And so I was just kind of feeling into what you said, and, you know, it's one of those things where my, my natural instinct is to say, that's cool, and stick with it actually, just to try it again. And just because we can have our first experience, and an example I have really, I work with a lady who's got MS. And she, when I first started working with her, she, she really, really struggled to the point that we were gonna, you know, she was like, can we just change this bit of the practice, so to speak?
Different technique, is that right, incorrect, saying so?
Yeah, so what we, what we did is we scaled it right back. So to give an example, like today, we gave a real immersion of, you know, doing a full-on double breathing practice. What I ended up doing with this lady is we started just doing ten. We started doing five, ten repetitions and just, and then moving on. And then we'd start with another practice and we would just start to build on it. And now it's really amazing because she throws me actually, and I know it sounds like we've got all these incredible stories, but we actually have. Like to see people change, like her relationship with stuff has really changed, and her relationship with her breath has changed quite a lot. So what it sounds to me is that it probably needs to be slower, less reps, a little bit shallower, until that starts to come into coordination, which is all totally doable. And yoga would call it, it's self-pacing. So the fact that you're saying this, to me, I'm really grateful because it highlights this thing that we assume that we're all going to do, which is self-paced, but actually you need sometimes the permission. Okay. Is there any other questions?
Uh, Kast, yeah, sorry, I'm.